City Council Public Attorney will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Hurdadeen?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty?
Here.
Pelletier?
Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion, open the public hearing.
Second.
If motion of the public hearing has been made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid for one solely owned pole locating as follows, on Penn Street. Install one solely owned pole on Penn Street. National Grid is proposing to install one new forty-five-foot solely-owned pole approximately fifteen feet east of the existing Pole 24 on Penn Street. This pole will allow National Grid to extend a three-phase overhead conductor from Pole 24 to propose Pole 24-1 to allow for the installation of the pole-mounted three-phase transformer bank. This transformer bank will feed a new service for Gold Medal Bakery in the trailer parking lot at 1397 Bay Street in accordance with Plan Number 30861726. Are there any proponents to this proposal? Any proponents at all? Do you want to come down and... Just state your name and address for the record and...
My name's Rebecca Marks. I'm from the Hope Dale National Grid Office. I'm here to represent National Grid. Pretty straightforward. Gold Medal Bakery is in need of a new service for their trailer park. We need to install the new pole with three-phase transformer bank on it. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents at all? Seeing none, we entertain the motion of closing the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. City Council Committee on Finance will please come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Hurdadeen?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty?
Here.
Pelletier? Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this finance meeting, or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have a number of citizens who have signed up. One is actually going to speak before, and one will speak after finance. First, we have Cliff Ponte. Sure. Okay. All right. So they'll both speak after finance. Item number two in finance, amended loan order in regard forward. School departments propose to the Massachusetts School Bill of Authority for the Robert Maderas Resiliency Preparatory Academy renovation project. Refer on 11/28/2023. We'll have a discussion. Want to come down, please? Just state your name and address for the record, and then...
Seth Akins, City Administrator.
Bridget Allman, Director of Financial Services.
Counselor, seat six. Counselor Vice President Perera? This is on item number two. Correct. So explain what happened, what was missing on the original authorization was to seek MOFA approval.
So the only thing that's changing is there was additional language that we needed to add in order to get MFAB approval, which would allow us, which allows the city to then borrow at the state's, like borrowing, which gives us a lower interest rate. So because that's a newer language that had to get added, in order to go for that MFAB approval, we needed to add this language. So that's strictly the only thing that's changing on this.
That's the only thing.
That's the only thing, but we legally needed approval.
Okay. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat number one. Did you have your hand up, Counselor Hurdadeen?
No, I got the question answered. Thank you. Motion for full counsel?
Motion referred to full counsel for action. Any other questions? Motion for has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is in transfer appropriation. In accordance with provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriation to your honorable body, that the sum of $2,500,000 be and the same as hereby transferred to the fire salaries from the stabilization fund.
Motion, full counsel?
Second.
We're just going to hold a discussion if you have any, but it's already, there's no need to refer. It's in full counsel.
I didn't think anyone had any questions.
That's fine. Counselor, motion has been taken. Under motion, Counselor C2, Counselor Dion?
Yes, so this $2.5 million transfer will fully fund the contract?
No, so the two and a half million is transferred from stabilization. We had reserved five, I think that's about 522,000 of ARPA for retro. So we're utilizing that money. And with the vacancies and the 6% raise that was already budgeted, we feel that this will, it'll cover the contract.
So 500,000. I thought when I read the JLMC paperwork that you stated that the city had put aside 800,000.
The 830, no. The 830,000, the city had put aside 500,000 for the firefighters. It was about, so I don't know where that's, I'd have to look and see where that says that.
Yeah, that was in the paperwork we got from the JLMC.
So on page 20, it says, "Funding in free cash." That's, that's actually an error. On page 20, that 830,000 is free cash that was certified to use to help towards pay the diamond interest. And the ARPA money, there's an error, because it's four and a half million that was budgeted, not 4.3.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Just curious, when did you notice that there was an error in there?
I just noticed it tonight. I apologize.
And if it didn't come up, we weren't going to know. We should have been told that before the meeting, when you know that there was an error and these numbers just need to change. I understand you just noticed it tonight, but Bridget, did you know before tonight?
Well, this was, this isn't based on cost of the contract. This is just on page 20 is stated numbers out of the, directly out of the budget.
Yeah, no, my question is, when did you know it was an error? Did you pick up this error, or who found the error?
I mean, I picked up the error when I was reading this tonight, again.
All right. Just like it is, Counselors know of such mistakes before we sit down and someone has to ask a question about the numbers, and we find out that the numbers that were being given is not accurate, it's just, just something that we should be told, that what the real numbers are. Counselor, seat six, Counselor Pereira?
So in other words, if we don't approve the 2.5 out of stabilization, then the firefighter's contract is not fully funded. It's funded with whatever money you got from ARPA, et cetera. But, so you can't approve one without approving the other. They both have to be approved at the same time. Am I correct?
I'm not sure how to answer that question. So first of all, obviously, we do support the award, we support the arbitrator's award unconditionally. If the council votes not to fund the 2.5, it would essentially return to the bargaining table. But without the 2.5 appropriation, we could not fund the arbitration award. That's correct.
But, I've been here a while, Mr. Akins, and when administration and unions can't come to an agreement, and it goes to arbitration, we always go with the arbitrator's award. I mean, that's what you sign up for. If we can't come with a decision, you know, we can't negotiate it, it's going to go to an arbitrator. And the first thing the arbitrator does is look at the city's ability to pay. So obviously, they had to think that the city had the ability to pay. But if we don't vote for the 2.5, you're saying then we go back to negotiation? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You, Counselor?
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor C1, Counselor Hurdadeen?
Thank you. So the, I mean, the role of the legislative body is to provide an appropriation for the contract. So that's what, what we're doing. But I think the initial question that was asked was, this isn't the total funding for the contract. We're just looking for retro in, I guess, year two of the contract. Is that what we're looking at?
So there's three pools of money. So there's the money that was budgeted, that's already in the budget, that essentially guessed at what the increase would be. There is the money that was set aside for retro out of ARPA money. And then there is this pool of money that we're asking the council to vote on tonight, which is the 2.5 million. Those three things together will fully fund the arbitrator's award.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right. So fiscal year '22, '23, '24. So the, typically, when we get a contract before us, it's usually the first year that we're looking to appropriate for the collective bargain agreements. So the total amount is 3.5 million. So you're saying two and a half coming from stabilization account, and then you've got the other monies budgeted. Is that what you're being saying?
There is some money already in the budget, and then there's the retro that was, that was ARPA money.
How does this line up with the police department? And I know we're asking for updated numbers. I'm just, I'm just curious, because these numbers tend to look a little higher than what we were presented with the police. So, you know, fiscal year '22 for the fire, 652,000, just under 1.3 in FY '23, and then 1.6 in '24. And just looking at the police contract that you had given us for the initial appropriation, we were looking at 1.9 million dollars total for police. Were those numbers accurate that you gave us, or?
Yeah, and actually, those numbers are looking, that they're coming in, that looks like it's higher, because we've had some people leaving and leaving at a higher step and hiring younger step. Plus, we have still significant, there's, I think, 24 vacancies in the police department and patrol.
So given the conditions that were in place at the time we provided that financial impact statement, those numbers are correct, given some unforeseen circumstances with people, some retirements and some folks leaving or not completing the academy. At this point, then it's coming in a little bit, a little bit different than what we projected.
That doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. So whether people are making the, I guess, passing the academy or retiring, those numbers don't change, right? So we budget for next amount of employees.
Yeah, we budget. But the actual, I thought you would ask for the actual cost, the actual expense.
No. Well, I was looking for the actual cost in terms of what it was, but including the vacancies.
Okay, including, then I can include the vacancies.
Right. Okay. So I'm going to be supporting the JLMC award that came down. I think the, you know, the firefighters deserve it. And quite frankly, I think the arbitration award is going to be based on the police contract itself anyway. So I think that's what the arbitrator is going to be looking at in terms of affordability and all that other stuff. So I've got no issue with this, and I'll be supporting it in full counsel. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C3, Counselor Kilby?
Yes. Echo the same comments as Counselor C1. I'll definitely be supporting the, this contract, even though it's some one-time money we're using. But it is an arbitrator's award. I think even going into this process, I realized that if one public safety entity, like the police, and another public safety entity, like the fire department, which is invaluable to both, invaluable to the city, there's going to be a very similar, similar award. So thoroughly read through the arbitrator's decision. I think we have an obligation. We would see a non-fail labor practice if, I think, if we did not support this. So not only do I support it in my heart, hopefully, the fundability is going to be there moving on. And it speaks to, of course, we get a piece of one-time money here, but it speaks to me to the question of the Bank Street Amory and its other things that are before us that are going to cost one-time money. So I think, you know, over the next couple of years, I think I'll, yeah, I will be sitting here along with many others. There's definitely probably going to be some hard decisions to make. But for me, this is a vote that would hold conscience. I think the rank and file of the fire department deserve it. And I could see city administrators' passion for this. I think, I think we both agree, it's not safe to use one-time money when it comes to collective bargaining. It's a reoccurring expense. So I think there's going to be some planning strategies going forward for the city and this council. So I yield. Do you want to reply to that, Mr. Akins?
No, thank you. We support the war.
You're sure? I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further comments or questions?
Refer to full counsel. Second.
motion referred to full counsel, it's already there. It's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Due to the fact that a number of two individuals want to speak when Counselor Pelletier is here, we are not going to adjourn finance. We're just going to take a recess, and we reconvene at, let's say, 10:00 of 7:00. City Council Committee on Finance will reconvene. We have two individuals who have signed up for citizens' input time. First, we have Cliff Ponte. Subject matter, Counselor Leo Pelletier.
I'm going to try to keep it to three minutes. I don't want to get Counselor Hurdadeen upset. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the City Council, today marks an emotional moment as we come together to say goodbye to a figure in our community, the beloved City Councilor Leo Pelletier. Leo Pelletier has been an essential part of our council for an impressive 36 years, a duration surpassing a lifespan on most smartphones. One might also envision Leo still having that flip phone. They say wisdom grows with age, and after navigating the complexities of council debates and city matters for 36 years, it's fair to say Leo did give Yoda a run for his money. Leo, your impact has been as enduring as the strategic maneuvering observed in the series of The West Wing. However, unlike the intrigue depicted in that show, your dedication and genuine care for our community remained unwavering, showcasing an honorable essence of your political involvement. Your humor, Leo, has been a secret ingredient in our council meetings. Your witty remarks has transformed tense deliberations into moments of laughter. If there was an award for turning a mundane city council meeting into a comedy show, you'd win that award. On a deeper level, your unwavering loyalty to our city, your tireless commitment to progress, and your dedication have made a lasting impact on this community. I remember vividly my early days running for City Council President. Visiting your home, your loyalty and your support met no bounds. You are a true man of your word. As you bid farewell to this council, Leo, your absence will be deeply felt. But take solace in knowing that your stories and your wisdom will reverberate in these chambers for years to come. Perhaps we'll even honor your legacy by naming a street after you. And who could forget Leo's iconic van? A symbol in our city, Leo's van proudly displaying his name on one side and Deb's on the other side, seems to have transported enough chow mein sandwiches to feed a small army in the last 36 years. Your tenure has been so extensive that I'm certain these very seats that you're all sitting in tonight were new 36 years ago. Your approach, your jokes, your style, was a seasoning that added flair to even the dullest discussions. Without your humor, our meetings might have risked it, turned, risked it, risked it, turning into a collective snooze fest. In the midst of your laughter, Leo, you have been a passionate advocate for progress. Your visionary leadership and unwavering commitment have shaped policies that have significantly improved countless lives in our city. Many folks don't know your health concerns over the past few years, but you've kept at it. You shut up for as many meetings as you can, and you still did the job to the best of your ability. As we bid farewell to you today, a mix of sorrow and gratitude fills the air. Your dedication, your hard work, your keen passion will be etched in the history of our city for generations to come. Leo, your 36-year tenure on this council isn't just a statistic. It is a legacy woven into the heartbeat of our community. Your dedication, your service, and unwavering passion has been a guiding light for our city's progress. Your jokes weren't just punchlines. They were, they were stitches that mended the fray, edged in the heartbeat of debate. Your humor, a treasure of joy, has left an everlasting mark in our hearts. The echoes of your laughter will resonate through these chambers, reminding us of the warmth and camaraderie you brought to every discussion. But it's not just your wit that we'll miss, Leo. It's your unwavering dedication, your tireless efforts, your willingness to listen to every citizen's concern. You've been a steadfast anchor in the storm of change, providing stability and reassurance to our city's aspirations. Your legacy isn't just the policies you've crafted or the votes you've cast. It's the lives you've touched, the dreams you've nurtured, and the hope you've instilled in all of us. Counselor Pelletier, your departure leaves a void impossible to fill. Your name will be engraved in the fabric of our city, a lasting testament to the service and dedication that you brought to this community. Your exit marks the conclusion of an era, but it's also the introduction to the countless tales of your selfless commitment to endure for generations. In your absence, the legacy you've built will endure. As we say so long to you for now, Leo, we will not mourn just your departure. We'll celebrate the remarkable journey you've led. You've been the guardian of our city's aspirations, and for that, we will be forever grateful. Thank you, Leo, for your immeasurable service, your tireless dedication, and the proud, profound impact you've had on all of us. Farewell, Counselor Pelletier. Your legacy will be forever etched in our hearts and in the soul of our beloved city. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very, very well done, my friend. Soon to be the City Councilor again. What seat you going to sit in?
I think it's going to be seat six.
Linda? So you're going to get to sit in my seat. I mean, sit in my, sit in my seat.
Can I move the chair over?
Good luck. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Free breakfast tomorrow at Al Mac's Diner, right?
Next, we have Danny Romelod. Subject matter, Counselor Leo Pelletier.
Members of the council, President Kamara, I speak only for myself tonight as a resident and not on behalf of any board or commission I serve on. How do I follow the last speech? Well, let me begin by saying I met Counselor Pelletier when I was about seven. He was playing in a charity softball game in which he suffered an injury, long before I ever became politically active in this community. But when I got here, it was very clear that Counselor Leo Pelletier was a staple in this chamber. As I've watched counsel at countless meetings and thought about what it would be to be a city councilor, there's two things. The vote you take. But Leo's real legacy to me in this chamber is based on constituent service. That is the hallmark of his career. That has, has made him the fabric. He is the every-person councilor. It doesn't matter whether you're up here or you're down here. Leo deals with everybody in the same fashion. Fair, he's willing to listen. But the constituent service is the hallmark of his 36-year career. His phone must ring more than any councilor in the history of Four River. And I bet that's going to continue, because people know, when you called Leo, it got done. Some mayors in the past didn't like it, didn't stop Leo. Leo did his job. He did it well. We didn't always agree. But I can tell you, this chamber is not going to be the same without the presence of Counselor Leo Pelletier. And I dare say, there will never be another city councilor that will, will make the mark as far as constituent services go for the people of Fall River. Well done, councilor. Take care.
Thank you very much, Danny. Appreciate it. Nice job. You remember that softball? That softball? Just tell the story. I'm playing softball. I don't play sports. I was shortstop, and the ball's coming, I'm ready to catch it, it hit me right here. And I think I'm out this much, and my friend told Debbie, he says, listen, Leo got hurt pretty bad. He said, when you see him, expect it. When she come in the room, she almost passed out for a minute. It was really out there. Took six months to heal. I was, oh my God, look at it, and lose my eye.
What a shot.
Yeah.
Well done, councilor.
But it was a good cause, so, thank you. Appreciate it.
I didn't know you were athletic.
True story, I saw Leo play basketball at a fundraiser years ago.
Oh, I believe he did.
True story.
Yes, yes.
He played, yeah?
I think he was a shortstop there, too.
He's been a shortstop his whole life. Next, we have Carlos Cesar. Subject matter, polling places.
Good evening. For disclosure, Mr. Pont's speech, I write it. Very good. Thank you, Pelletier, Councilor Pelletier. I think this time you're for real. You tried this twice. I remember about eight years ago, we got the plaque. Your house must be full of plaques already.
I do have two.
Every time that you build a new wall, you say it's time for retirement so that I can get more plaques.
Well, I wasn't on about this. You know, I'm good. That's it. Debbie's going to retire January third, fourth, or fifth, I don't know yet.
There he comes, a nice cruise.
Just in time, when I'm going to relax, she going to retire. What am I doing now? Chase around the house?
Well, I have to say it too, because you are very famous here, she's very famous downstairs, that's why I call her the first lady. For years, I call her the first lady because it's the first lady I see when I walk in. So I always say, how you doing, first lady?
That's right. Always smiling, always smiling.
So the reason I'm here today is because I got a call this morning about some places are being proposed to be moved for voting places. And I have my concerns because everybody knows the story about voting in the city, it's getting lower and lower and lower. So we have, and I had heard both sides, and I understand both sides, but the end of the day is, and like the George Catell, they're probably going to hear for the first time tonight that they're probably, they're thinking about taking the voting place from there. If I'm driving, it doesn't matter to me where I'm going to vote, if I'm going to vote here or if I'm going to vote there. I already put my effort to go out and vote. Now, what we about to lose probably is those seniors that live on those apartments because most of them don't have families, so they cannot move, they cannot go out to vote to another place. A lot of them, they barely walk, they have walkers and stuff, and it's so much easier to vote just going downstairs by the elevator. My mother used to say, it's better one bird in your hand than two flying on the sky. Those votes, we know that people is committed to come down every voting day and vote. And I think it's going to be a mistake. So that's why I'm saying, and I know the council is going to hear this for the first time, it's a lot of work you're going to put into it, and you're going to need a lot of information, but you probably will be surprised, just like I was this morning, that we need to make it easier for people to vote, not the other way around. And another excuse that I heard is, well, but we're going to, we want to create more mail voting. I don't believe those people are going to vote by mail. They will not vote by mail. They vote, they've been doing that for years, and I think that's the only way they're going to vote. And makes no sense, even, even I heard too that they're going to pay transportation, or they're going to have transportation, even if the transportation is for free, okay? I don't think... Oh, there we go. I thought I was off my three minutes.
You are.
Which I am. But so, like I was saying, even if they provide free transportation, I don't think this person is going to get out of their apartment when they should go and vote downstairs just to get herself in a van, or himself in a van, and go to vote to another place. So let's get more information and see if we don't get, start getting the votes away from them and versus help them to, and get more people out to vote. So I'm here to support, I'm here against moving the voting place especially from the George Catell apartments, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Leo.
Thank you.
Debbie, no further speakers. Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn being second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Committee on Finance is now adjourned. We'll go right into the regular meeting. City Council, please come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yeah.
Dionne?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council please rise for a moment of silence and prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Clerk, at this time, I entertain a motion to take the meeting out of order.
Motion to take citations out of order.
Second.
Second.
Motion as made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, I'll call Councilor, proposal to come up, please, and present the citation. Councilor Dionne can join in.
So I will keep this short and sweet. So this citation is going to be presented to Council of Liberty, and thank you, Councilor Dionne, for supporting this along with me. I want to just personally say thank you from me to you. When I got elected and I was the only newbie joining the crew two years ago, you were council president, and I made a call to you, and you took me right under your wing. You know, I had a lot of questions walking into this whole new thing, and you were always very kind, very helpful to help me navigate what this was. Your efforts do not go unnoticed. Your effort to this community, your effort to this council, and the variety of roles and positions you've held here is greatly appreciated. And I know, speaking upon myself, I thank you for supporting me in where I sit today. And long and short of it, I wish you the best of luck going forward in your many adventures, I'm sure. Your kids are here, where are they? Smile, hello. Hi, kids, nice to see you. Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for this community, and on behalf of all of us, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I would like to echo some of what Andrew said. Four years ago, there were three new people on the council, I was one of them. And at that time, Pam did the same thing for us, along with Cliff. They were president and vice president. They got budget books, gave them to us, said, look these over, these are the things you need to learn, these are the things you're going to need to know, walked us through it, made us feel comfortable. That's just something that she's done with people all along, always kept us informed. You know, you can't put a price on those things. Also, constituent services, Pam has helped many, many, many people. Because she never talked about it didn't mean she wasn't doing it and wasn't helping people all the time. And I can tell you, as an elected official, eight years may not seem a lot compared to thirty-six, but eight years is a long time. It's not an easy thing to put yourself out there, it's not an easy job, even though some people think it is. And for that, thank you and good luck.
We also have Mayor Coogan's other citations going to present as well to Council of All.
Excellent. So our citation is official resolution, be resolved, the City Council hereby extend its commendation to Pamela Liberty in recognition for over eight years of dedicated service as an elected official to the city of Fall River. Be further resolved, the Florida City Council extend best wishes for your continued success, and this resolution be entered into the records of the City Council adopted December 12th, 2023.
And as the mayor of the city of Fall River, I have to have known Pam for a long time. She's done a lot of great, great work in the community, and I, of course, wish her nothing but the best, and of course, an honor and recognition of her eight years of dedicated service to the city of Fall River and its residents. Again, going forward, we hope everything gets just the way you want it to be, and good luck with the kids and everything else.
Thank you all so much. I have never been one for long speeches, and I'm not going to start now. This will be two minutes tops, and I wrote it down because I'm not good at speeches, even after eight years. In the last eight years, I have served under two administrations, four years each, and I have been through every emotion in this position: happiness, sadness, frustration, disbelief, those were the jazzy years. I've laughed, I've cried, I've learned. I've learned this position is not easy. I've learned this city has the biggest heart, the people who live here and the people who work here. And I've learned that while the role of the council is legislative, that has never stopped counselors for helping wherever and whenever they can. And I've learned when someone is down or tragedy strikes, this city steps up like no other. While I've learned, I also hope that I've set an example, especially for my children who are here tonight, not to be afraid to speak up for what you believe in. Not everyone will agree with you, and that's okay, you can disagree respectfully. Not everyone will like you. Don't take it personally. I've been called every name in the book, criticized for every type of thing that have nothing to do with this job, my clothes, my hair, my shoes, which are fabulous. I've had people picket in front of my work, also the jazzy years. You need a thick skin and a healthy sense of humor to do this job. Then the same people who don't like you will reach out to you when they need help. Help them if you can. Not everything is black and white, there are often two, three, four, seven, eight sides to a story, and sometimes it's okay to remain quiet, to keep your peace, and let people be wrong about you. People have asked me if I'm sad to leave. In the next two years, my son Jamison is going to finish middle school and start high school, and my daughters Paige and Hope are going to be in their junior and senior years at Durfee High School, and I'm not going to miss a minute of it. Am I sad while I'm serving? Absolutely. The good of this position has always outweighed the bad, but it doesn't compare to what I'm going to gain. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a couple of citations to give out. One, I think we know who it's for. The other one, I don't think she realizes she's going to be getting a citation today, but Inez, can you come up here, please? Sorry to spring it on you. Inez recently was certified as municipal clerk by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Congratulations. We gave the citation, we were going to give it to her at the last city council meeting, but she was sick and didn't even show up to the meeting, and we had a citation for you there. One of the very few meetings that she has missed since she's been a clerk. And let me just tell you something about these three individuals here. They make all of us look a lot better than we really are. I think they wrote Cliff's speech, to be honest with you. But that's okay, it was a great speech, Cliff. They do a phenomenal job. We're very lucky in the city to have three clerks, Allison Bouchard, Lauren Valcourt, and Inez Lee, they do a wonderful job, and they're tremendous assets to this community. With that being said, it's an official resolution, be resolved, the City Council hereby extend its commendation to Inez Lee in recognition of your achievement of being awarded the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk by the International Institution of Municipal Clerks. Be further resolved, the Florida City Council extends best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered into the records of the City Council. It is proposed by the entire City Council, signed by myself and attested to by Allison Bouchard, the clerk. Congratulations, very well deserved, keep it up. Counselor, you want to make your way up here, or you want to just stay there?
I'm not that old, I don't have the wheelchair.
So let me just state that I met Leo, I mean, when I ran back in 1995, we did a lot of camping together, and things were a lot different back then. It was amazing. I went to one of Leo's fundraisers once, and I didn't even know what he was talking about, because Leo said to the crowd, what we need to do in this city is burn the trash, bury the ash, and keep the cash. And I'm like, what is he talking about? And it's, back then, we had incinerator, and we had a landfill, and that's what we used to do for revenue. We used to burn the trash, bury the ash, and keep the cash. And that was Leo's slogan. It got him elected over and over. Remember that one? Or whatever the case may be. All well and good. Chow mein. But listen, as Cliff said, as many other people said, when it comes to constituent service, as Danny Robelod pointed out, there's no one that does it better than Leo. When I need something done, I'll let you know, I call Leo. CEO, can you take care of this for me? He does it all the time. Just kidding. But no, he's a wonderful man, he actually has been a breath of fresh air. Some of the stuff that he has come up with on his council makes absolute sense, and it's so common sense, it's just, sometimes you say common sense isn't that common anymore until Leo speaks and bring it all back home to where we should be doing. He's been the leader on his council, even though he was never the council president, a lot of council presidents refer to Leo and talk to Leo for advice, because as one counselor knows, Leo knows what's cooking. He's always had his finger on the pulse, he knows what the community's thinking, and he always fights for their behalf. So I don't want to go on too much, Counselor, but thank you very much for what you've done personally from one council to another on the years that I've served with you. You're a tremendous individual. This is an official resolution from the entire City Council, be resolved, the City Council extends, hereby extend its commendation to Leo O. Pelletier, City Counselor, in recognition of over thirty-six years of dedicated service as an elected official to the city of Fall River. Started in 1982 through 1987, then there was an absence, then he started again in 1990 through 1991, then 1994 through 2011, then 2014 to 2023. So be further resolved, the Florida City Council extends best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered into the records of the City Council, adopted today, December 12th, 2023, proposed by the entire City Council, signed by myself and attested to by Allison Bouchard, the clerk. Leo, congratulations. Thank you for your service, we appreciate it. Thank you. Say a few words now, or say a few words later.
I'm going to say a few words in a few minutes. I'll take it, and I'll sit down and relax, and then we'll open it up.
You do whatever you want, my friend. You do whatever you want, my friend.
Thank you.
That was from Slack.
Thank you, Blake.
Hope I hit a million dollars.
I hope you do too. This is one of those plaques to add to your wall. Leo O. Pelletier.
I'm glad you got the O in there.
I did. Oscar, isn't it?
Oscar.
There you go. "In sincere appreciation and gratitude for your thirty-six-plus years of service to the citizens of Fall River, may you be proud of the work you have done, the person you are, and the difference you have made in the lives of so many." And I'm gonna miss sitting near ya. We kinda take care of each other.
That's right.
And this is from me because you couldn't leave without this. Please open it.
Might be a hand grenade.
You see what I sit near? You always gave us chow mein, I wanna give you chow mein on your way out.
Now, Mayor, Mayor Coogan's got a citation as well, Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
He's getting tired.
I was Mr. Mayor. You're gonna miss me. You're gonna miss me, you're gonna miss my votes, that's why you're gonna miss my votes.
It goes way beyond your votes, all one of them. I do wanna say that I have known Leo forever. I went to a ton of his chow mein festivals out at the liberal club and he's been a fixture in this city for a long time and he does a lot of great things to help a lot of different people. And he's, he's gonna be sorely, sorely missed on this council. I'm not gonna try to repeat the speeches that have gone before me. Because I'm not gonna do that. Join the club. So, for city councilor Leo O. Pelletier, an honor and recognition of his thirty-six years of dedicated service to the city of Fall River and its residents. I want you to know, I appreciate everything you did personally. I say this, but I still think I'm gonna run into you at Bobby's Garage or at the IPC or somewhere out and about. So, you're gonna be around, you're just changing your seat. We also have another special gift, a key to the city. But you don't need it.
Open the vault?
No, it won't. It won't open the vault, but because you don't need it because the city's on a combination lock. Thank you very much, Leo, I'm gonna miss you, good luck to everything in the future, you and Debbie both.
Hang on, hang on a minute. Oh, Mr. Mayor, you know? You know, Mr. Mayor, I asked you for something, somebody asked me for it and I talked to one of your helpers and three weeks went by and they didn't do it. Then I contacted you, I said, "Mr. Mayor, you know, we got a building next to the pond, at Kennedy Park, where we parked the trucks to cut the grass and all that stuff." And I says to you, "Mr. Mayor, that building is awful, I don't know if you can't see," whatever the case may be. "It would take, Mr. Mayor, three gallons of paint to paint that little building, the little building, and then you got it done in two weeks, I'm so proud of you." "I'm so proud of you." "I was gonna give you a citation, but you know, I said, 'I better not, they're gonna think I'm on a take or something.'" "But it looks good, thank you for that." "Oh, got a mural, not mine's, I hope." "Okay, who's got the mic now?"
This is a clock, so that you know what time it is to watch the meetings because then you're gonna call us and criticize or compliment us, I don't know which. But we got your clock, I'm gonna give this to you.
All right, thank you. All right.
I know you wanna speak later, Counsel, but Counsel C-Three, Counsel Kirby, I'm sure others might say something. Counsel Kirby?
Yes, really quick, Counsel Camara, you, we both entered politics at the same time, nineteen ninety-five. And just a couple of funny stories. My father and my mother love Leo. They have very, very good friends with the Mox family. And I remember, just a quick story, when we both ran for the first time and I, after my father voted, right, holding a sign on the corner of Tansy, my mother, they said, "Yeah, of cour-" I said, "You vote?" "Yeah, we voted." "I voted for you, Leo Pelletier, and Joe Camara." So, but a lot of stories, everyone loves you. I could go on and on and on with all the stories, but except for the canceling the Holy Ghost Face, maybe not so many people then. "Oh, Leo, I don't know what to say, I'm gonna miss you so much." Thirty-six years, I've been married thirty-six years.
Thank God, not to me. Where the hell am I going?
From, from SARS, the Holy Ghost Face, from sitting on ballots.
That's right.
Right? Oh, my God. Sitting on ballots with Chuck Gregory, God rest his soul. And the first time I met you, I was twenty-two years old, going to the little Lizzie's down there. You know, trying to get, meet a girl. And you walk in, I didn't know who you were, and I said to myself, "Who the heck is this guy?" "Oh, I am, I'm so happy to be able to serve with you. I have so many warm feelings for you and your family and love you very much." So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
God bless.
Okay.
That's all for now. Go back to your seat, Counsel. We got a meeting to finish, Counsel, hurry up.
May I, Counsel Camara, while I'm on a roll here, I also wanna say thank you to Counsel LeBeau. Counsel LeBeau is a wonderful, wonderful, giving person. She actually is from the Cape, so can you imagine being born up the Cape, then coming to Fall River? And it's not your hometown, but Counsel LeBeau got so involved with her organization, the St. Anne's Neighborhood Association. The park for the handicapped children that she built there with, with the help of others, but she coordinated all of that. And, and she, through hard work and dedication, got elected as a non-towner. And Fall River's always been parochial, you know? It's, it's difficult when you're running outside, coming in and planting your roots and achieving elective office. So, very happy to have served with you. And of course, we don't always agree on things, but that's fine. And I wish you well and I'm gonna miss you too. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. And, of course, Counsel, you wanna speak now or?
Yes. Am I allowed to?
You can speak now and we'll adopt the citations afterwards.
First of all.
You have three minutes, Counsel. You have three minutes.
Three minutes? I could do a lot of damage in three minutes. You know that? I'd like to thank my family tonight for being here. And also, all the firemen, they didn't know I was leaving today. I'm glad you come by, but you're on, you're on a ballot, I mean, you're on a schedule A and you got my vote, you guys are good with me, I'll tell you that, that's for sure. I'd like to introduce my family. If you could stand up, that'd be nice. Start off with my wife, the smiling blonde downstairs. Get up, wait, stay up. My, my daughter Lisa and Timmy. Haley, my granddaughter. Their boyfriend, Drew. My son Joey and his wife Christie. And Bree, that goes out with my grandson. He's not here tonight, he's going to college. I don't know what he's taking up, but that's all right. Emily, part of the family, Emily, stand up, maybe see a few cute guys here. And we got my sister-in-law, Joanne. And my sister-in-law, brother-in-law, Eddie Fitter, Pat Fitter. And my, the runt of my family, we're nine, is Mikey, Mike, get up. And his wife, Madeline. I'm gonna make sure I didn't miss anybody. Okay, I didn't miss anybody.
The one you came in first place so many times.
And also, you know, Danny Roblott touched on constituent service. And you'd be surprised where people get a hold of me to talk to me, you never know where. But we have a place, the garage, Pickham Street Garage. A lot of people know and they go there. They want something, they go. If I'm not there to tell them, "Just come back, we will be here." We'll be past seven till about quarter of night. We have the coffee run, we have a coffee, we talk, we have a good time. And there's always somebody coming in, once a week maybe or whatever. And we try to guide them in the right way and that's it. But whatever they ask me, and if the, the city hall is open, and, and I always, if there's something I can do, right there, while they're there, I just pick up the phone, yeah. "The bill inspector, please, this guy's got a problem and everything else, could you, could you talk to him, could you straighten him out? Could you tell him what to do?" And then I'm all done. My job's all done. So, it, it's a easy, easy thing to do. But you never know where, where you're gonna see the people. I come, come out of church two weeks ago and I called Lauren up and says, you know, "I gotta stop in church today, I got a couple of things I gotta put in. One was a light on and I forget what the other one was." But anyway, we, we got it done. And, you know, even, you go to men's room, they said, "Oh, they're gonna tell me, 'Can you wait till I get out, please?'" And when I get out, I said, "You wash your hands?" He wants to shake my hands, I pat him on the back. But you never, never know. And I tried, I do take care of people. I don't care they got money, no money. I had a guy that robbed my house and he got in trouble and I helped him out. Well, that's it, "Oh, you robbed my house, that's it." Stole my bracelet, stole my diamond ring. And I know the guy who bought it, but I, I let everything go, that's the way it is, you know? You know, in thirty-six years, you know, you done a lot for the city. I had Counsel Long sitting next to me, I think four years, and he said, "I don't know how you're doing. I really don't know how you're doing. How can you take this?" I said, "That was just for him." He left. And it's a stressful, stressful job, it is. Because what they ask you for, you try to do it, you try to do it. And if, if you succeed, it's okay. I done stuff that I didn't think I could do. And, and I done it, but not advertise it, but I got it done. Not that it was illegal, it just, you know, we done it, that's it, you're all set. You know, I don't need no envelopes, no nothing. Once in a while they'll bring me a box of chocolate, they don't know I got sugars, I don't eat it. Then I quit drinking, they give me a bottle of C.C. Well, I give it to the next raffle, "Here, take this and raffle it off." I quit drinking, you know what I mean? So, many years ago, I think Mr. Reposa, Counsel Reposa, I think he wasn't in his diapers then, but I was a counsel.
I wasn't, I wasn't even born yet, Counsel.
You wasn't born, oh my God.
I was born in nineteen ninety-one, so I was still in the heavens.
Oh, you're still in heaven. Well, anyway, we had a little meeting about the bridge, Somerset, the Fall River, the memorial bridge there. So, I wanna oversee what's, what's going on and, you know, what do I know? Looks beautiful to me, you got the bridge, you can off ramp here, off ramp there, it opens up and that's good. So, what do you think? Hey, whatever you need, of course, I'm gonna go for it, whatever you need, you got my vote and that's it. And it took a long time, but the bridge is up now, we use it. So, that's how things go. New police station. Heaven forbid that thing falls down, and maybe it should fall down. That thing was gone, the police station was open. We allocated money maybe about a year ago for windows and, and the air conditioning. At least we're spending money on one building. And you got the other building, the armory, you ain't doing nothing with it. It's a pit, that's what it is. And it, and it's gonna go, and if the city takes that building, they, they just can't keep it up. They just can't keep it up. That's why I was hoping, I didn't miss them two meetings, I came in and I sent a letter and figured that would work. But you know, I don't write letters like Cliff Ponte does. You know what I mean? If I use the verbiage, I can't use his words, they're too damn long. I use the little words, that's it, you know? And anytime there was a problem, we had a problem, and you guys know, the city of Fall River, you had rats. There were rats all over the place. And this guy on East Main Street, they was shooting them with BB guns. Well, there was, they were pretty healthy, healthy rats. There was a bakery there. And at the end of the night, you throw all the stuff in, in the barrels, they don't put a cover on. So, them rats are real good, they, they would shoot them. So, what did we do? The city said, "Well, we gotta do something, you know, they're flint, they're, they're all over the place." I get the calls all the time. I got a call, "Faust Fiori, hey Faust, I got a rat problem here, I got a rat problem there." Always took care of me. So, what did we do? The city looked around and they see other communities with these beautiful barrels, right here. Them barrels there. I think the first money we spent was about six and a half million dollars on it. Let me tell you, as long as I've been on the council, we had them barrels. Had one that the cover broke, then I seen another one that had a split in it and they had to use a hammer on it because I didn't see any of them barrels. So, that was a good thing. So, now the people don't have to use the covers, they, they got that. So, that was a good thing for the city of Fall River. You talk about the fire station and we built a flint one up, but down the north then, me and the mayor were at it a little bit and the mayor wanted to spend a million dollars on a piece of property and he had a piece of property there. So, I said, "Mr. Mayor," I says, "you got a piece of property you wanna pay a million dollars for?" He says, "Yeah." "You got a piece there." I says, "I will agree to that, only if you tell the people of Fall River that you wanna spend a million dollars instead of using land that you got." He kicked it in, he says, "Counselor, you're right. They built it, they built a training center there, they done a very good job." And that's, I felt real good that it turned it around. And I don't know if you guys work up there, beautiful place, beautiful place. Always try to take care of the firemen. All the schools, I mean, we built schools. We built nine schools on my watch, nine schools. And most of them were eighty percent reimbursable from the school, Massachusetts School Building Authority. I mean, come on, that's fantastic. The problem was after, we had to get rid of the old school. So, some went for a thousand, one five thousand, one went thirty thousand, whatever the case may be. But it's nice that we got those new schools. And Durfee School was the only one that committed that sixty-three percent reimbursable. And of course, we gotta pay for that. And now, I think the best school this, the city should have is the Diamond, but I don't know if the city can afford it. But we definitely need a trade school here in the city of Fall River. You got a lot of kids that don't get educated, but they're good with their hands. And if they got a place, they can learn, they can learn a trade and, and their life much easier. You got somebody that don't go to school and then they hang around and they, they become, you know, thieves and breaking cars and everything else. So, I think it's a good thing for the city and I'm hoping my colleagues keep that in mind when it comes up for the money and, and, and the only other thing I gotta say is, East Main Street, they built that thing and they covered it up, it looked like hell. And I'm not a guy who rolls tar, but there's something wrong here. So, I had a little investigation, they had the guys come down and inspect this, you know? Not enough tar here, not enough tar here, split in the middle all the way down. So, I said, "Hey, you guys are gonna redo it." Of course, they didn't wanna redo it. I said, "Well, you're gonna have to do something." So, they decided, they come in with the grinder, start grinding all the corners, all the way down East Main Street and putting maybe twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet all the way and took care of the middle. But I was watching them and I wasn't gonna let them get away with it. I didn't have to, but I did. I mean, the taxpayers good money, they pay good money for it, let's get what we deserve. And, and, and that's the way I felt and also, I'd just like to mention, a good friend of mine's, he had a, two tree. We got Cindy Savigny here tonight and her husband died about two months ago. And we went out every day, eat a cup of coffee, maybe a sandwich. He helped me on my campaign. We actually partners in one of, one of our businesses between me and him. We didn't last long, but it's all right. But he passed away and I just wanted to say how much he helped me and I appreciate it. But, uh, uh, he passed away and I just wanted to say how much he helped me and I appreciate it. And then we had another guy, I don't know if you guys knew him. Henry Servin, anybody know Henry Servin? Henry Servin, a nice guy, he helped us out. Uh, any one of my parties, you could see him at the corner of the bar drinking a screwdriver. That was Henry. And then, when he fell off the stool, we took him home. So, and then the other one is Herman Maderas, real, real nice guy. Uh, but, you know, life goes on. Nineteen eighty-two to twenty-twenty-three. And I worked with the best. I worked with city clerks, Joe Doran, a gentleman, a gentleman. And I, I started with him, I worked with him. Uh, what a hell of a guy. Carol Valcourt, city clerk. Carol Valcourt, assistant clerk. Carol, uh, Valcourt. City Council Secretary and City Council Senior Clerk and Typist. She's got more titles than I got here, you know? But she was, she was a nice, a nice woman as well. Allison Bouchard, there she is. Liven and colored that it were pink. You look good. Assistant City Clerk. And Council Senior Clerk and Typist. Assistant City Clerk, God rest her soul, Charlotte Kitchen. An Assistant City Clerk. Inish Lee, Assistant City Clerk. Now, I got in trouble with, with Inish. She got that Inish and it's tough for me to pronounce it when I first. Because it's got I N and they got a little E under the cap. What the hell's a cap mean? I don't know, where's that cap at? Is it cold, I gotta have a cap on, I don't know. But, I says, I get a, I, I can't even remember that name. So I used to call her Danish. Hey Danish, Danish, till I learned how to say Inish. So now we know that your name ain't Danish, it's Inish. But she's a good worker and congratulations. Uh, and then we got the secretaries, Terry Toolen. She called me up a couple of months ago, I was very surprised. She's up in Swansea, she heard I was sick and called me up. Nice, nice lady. And she worked as a secretary. Claudette Montour, a City Council Secretary and Senior Clerk and Typist. Now, she was almost related to me. Because her dad used to go out with my mother when she was ninety. Of course, you always worry because, you know, safe sex is the best, but I, you know. I'm gonna tell them, you know, you gotta, you gotta be careful, you're ninety years old. What are you doing? You're either going out for dinner or you're fooling around. Who knows? You alright? Almost there. Colleen Taylor, very nice girl, worked hard here, and I appreciate everything she's done for me. Lauren Valcourt, up and coming, up and coming. I, I can't believe, I had to research something the other day. And she had it all researched. And I called her up and she started reading it. Bing, 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 bing. Yeah? I didn't call you for that, I called you for something else, and, oh! Oh, alright, what do you want? So I told her what I wanted and that was it, but she read the whole thing off. You're not gonna read to the end, don't worry about it. City Councils, uh, Senior Clerks and Typists and Principal Clerks. Uh, Christie Calvero, did I say that right? Well, I practiced, I think I screwed it up. Laura Gardette LaPointe, Kathy A. Howard, Sierra Agia, Jamison Chase. Now, these people here all work for the council. And they all left. And, you know, we train them and they leave. And I said it before, we don't pay enough money, they leave, they find something else. And God bless them, maybe they got a better job, but we have to do a better job. Make sure we take care of our people who work for the city. Because they do an outstanding job. And with that, let me see. More paper. I think that's about it, so I'm gonna. I'm gonna feel a lot better tonight when I leave here, because I know I'm all done. But it is a stressful job, a stressful job. And, uh, I'm glad I, I done it. I don't know why I done it so long. I'm telling you, five months ago, they gave a speech here, I'm kind of rocky. But I'm feeling better. I wasn't sleeping that night, they took a medicine off me. It took eight to nine weeks to kick in. So now I'm sleeping at night, so that's a good thing. So maybe I'm on a mend, uh, being retired, uh, having Debbie there at the house to aggravate me, but, I mean, take care of me, uh, will be a good thing, I think, I hope. So with that, I think I, I, my three minutes up?
You got two minutes and fifty-nine seconds left.
And that's all I get to say and, and, and thank you, everybody. And if I hurt anybody, I apologize. I know we had a few rounds with different guys here. Sometimes you say things and it'll come out right, but it's okay. I made the thirty-five years and that's it. God bless you all and thank you very much.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the citations.
Motion to adopt.
Those are adopted, in a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion, motion carries. We will take a two-minute recess, only so that the camera crew can come here. We have a two-minute video on Council Pelletier that we're gonna show as well. They're just gonna come and turn the TVs on. City Council reconvened in about two or three minutes. City Council reconvened. Show a quick little video.
Here is battling health issues. He's undergone multiple heart procedures. Shortly after his release from the hospital in May, twenty-twenty-three, he returned to Chair Five to announce that he will not seek reelection.
Thursday before the operation, I told my wife, that's it, that's, I can't take this. Take my wallet, take my keys. Put it on the dresser. And call nine-one-one. So, went to the hospital. And they, uh, said I did have a heart attack around twenty-eight or twenty-nine. And, uh, I went for catheterization the next Monday. And, uh, they found two stents that were pretty well closed. They put two more stents in and they kept working on me. And they couldn't get the other one open. But after the operation, they come over and they told me, make sure you take it easy.
After forty years in office, Leo describes himself as a diligent public servant, a budget cruncher who reviews finances line by line.
When it first started, uh, first, four or five meetings and one, one person in the audience says, yeah, this guy is a fish out of water. Well, maybe I was. But you learn and you get better and you get better. And I was gonna say something. I didn't say it, cuz I thought, the other guy said the same thing I was gonna say, what the hell, that can't be that wrong.
Leo left school after ninth grade to assist his mother, a Canadian immigrant. He and his wife Debbie have been together forty years and own a beautiful, updated apartment building on Peckham Street.
Yeah, this, look at this, look, look at the job this guy, huh?
But everybody remembers the bus.
Oh, the bus is, oh my god.
Leo ran each campaign similarly, door to door and shaking hands. He misses old-style politics of personal conversations at coffee hours and Chow Mein dinners.
A lot of the high rises, they would go in and feed them. They only feed maybe thirty, forty people. But they go in there and then you get to know them and, and that's it. But they don't do that anymore as well, they don't do it.
Every family vacation was planned to accommodate his civic responsibilities. And he prides himself on brevity.
You can have an issue that would take this guy fifteen, twenty minutes. I can do it in four and a half, five minutes. Get to the point, here's what we're gonna do, here's what we should do. And, and that's it, and he ain't gonna change my mind. I mean, nobody's gonna tell me how to vote.
Leo says he's his own guy, even if that means confronting city officials and the eleven elected and acting mayors he's worked alongside.
I'm in a predicament with this. I don't like the way it was set up. Uh, you know, say one thing, you come in with something else and then you go after something else.
Well, with respect, Councilor, I, I really object. And I'm kind of offended by your characterization. I don't say one thing and do something else. I'm telling you what we know we're gonna do.
Well, they wanted the steel building, it wasn't your idea, they wanted the steel building.
And a steel building is no longer feasible.
Well, you know, they, they didn't do their homework, I guess. It, it, you know, it was suitable then, it's not suitable now. It, it doesn't make any sense to me. You can object to whatever you want, I don't care. But I'm just saying what I feel and what's going on and what may happen. What may happen, I don't know what's gonna happen. You're looking for another building. Oh, we need some more money for this and some more money for that. It's not right, taxpayers' money, that's the way I feel.
I respectfully disagree.
I'm sorry if I hurt your feelings or-
No, you hurt my feelings, it was just offensive.
Yeah.
To be suggested, for you to suggest that I'm, I'm lying or trying to mislead the council. I think I've been in front of you enough for you to know that I don't do that.
Well, listen. Nobody's been looking, nobody said anything about another building, another spot. Or a place that we have that's paid for versus a place maybe that we have to, after purchase. That's my concern. So we'll leave it set just the way it is. The administration will say what they're gonna say.
Leo is the longest-serving elected official in Fall River. Recognized beyond city boundaries. He's boisterous, quick-witted, and compassionate.
So, the way it is, I'm staying. And, uh, we're gonna take it from meeting to meeting. And with that, I appreciate you guys listening, thank you.
All set, Madam Clerk?
The first item on the agenda is a communication from the mayor. Excuse me, and two orders. The first is the memorandum of agreement between the Fall River firefighters, local thirteen fourteen, International Association of Firefighters, and the city of Fall River.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Or do we need a roll call?
Yep.
Roll call.
On item one A, uh, motion is to adopt, Counselor Skadine?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLiberty?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposa?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
President.
Yes. Motion carries.
Item one B is the order transferring the sum of two-point-five million dollars from the stabilization fund to fire salaries fund.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Items two A through H are the mayor's request for the reappointment, confirmation of the reappointments to the, uh, library trustees. The, uh, two A is for Ronald Kaplan. Two B is for Catherine Clarkin. Two C is for Joyce Coelho. Two D for James Gibney. Two E for Asia Grace. Two F Sharon Quinn. Two G Fran Racklin. And two H Amy Rockett Spurling.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is a communication from the Board of Election Commissioners and orders authorizing the presidential primary election for Tuesday, March fifth, twenty-twenty-four. The state primary election on Tuesday, September third, twenty-twenty-four. And the biennial state election on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion to-
Also, um, to designate polling places and changes to those polling places, some of them.
Motion to refer to finance. Um, but I'd also like to include in that, that it be sent to the Board of Election Commissioners. Um, I don't believe that there was a meeting. I don't believe there's been an opportunity for public input. Um, it's a significant change. Though we have a low voter turnout, it still affects thousands of people. Um, in the name of transparency, I think, uh, the Board of Election Commissioners having a public meeting and, and voting on this prior to bringing it back to us in finance would be in order. With that, I yield.
Second.
There was a motion to refer, was there a second?
Motion to refer-
There was a second.
To finance and send it to the Board of Elections. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? On the motion, I'm sorry, on the motion, Councilor C one, Councilor C-
Can I just get clarification, so when you say, refer to the, uh, Board of Election Commission, are you looking for a, a recommendation from them? Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should-
What if we do if they don't make a recommendation?
Well, that's, I guess that's what, I'm just trying, I just wanna make sure that-
We can't force them to take a vote on it.
I think by not going to the board first, it circumvents the board.
Councilor, I, I have no problem sending it to the board, I think we're all gonna vote to send it there. But we can't force them to have an election and take a vote on it. If they do, that's fine, if they don't, it's gonna come back to us.
And that's, and that's fine, I was just asking the question, cuz I just wanna make sure that we're clear on what, that we're looking for their recommendation, that's the only thing.
Yeah, I, it, see if they, if they, you know, if they're willing to take the vote on it and give us, um, you know, give us some background on this, some, some, you know, reasonings. Um, is there gonna be, uh, any net? Is it a net zero cost, are there increased costs, are they gonna save money? We, we know nothing about this, other than we wanna change the polling process.
I just wanna make sure that we're not forcing them to take a vote, they might not wanna take it.
No, no.
Vote on it and come back with a vote, but that's fine, as long as they send it to them.
Yeah.
Have them come back to us.
If we, and, you know, if we can get some sort of, sort of a plan and some expla, and some explanations.
Do you wanna send them a letter, or we're gonna refer the item to them? Once we refer it to them, it's not in- Once we refer it to them, it's not in...
I would like to refer it to them.
Finance.
And then...
I think the motion you made was refer to finance and also send it to them.
Correct.
So...
So what should we do? Just say, refer it to them? How do you wanna?
Refer it to the board for their recommendation.
Okay.
Would be my suggestion. Refer it to the board for their recommendation. When it returns, you place it back on your agenda.
That's fine. I'll make that motion.
Motion is to refer to Board of Elections. Is it a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas concerned members of the public recently spoke about Americans with Disabilities Act, accessibility with public transportation, and whereas these residents experience difficulty securing means of transportation in the city, and whereas they are seeking assistance, and how this can be resolved, and how the city can address this issue, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation meet with interested parties, Corporation Council, and representatives of local taxi companies to discuss ways to expand accessibility of transportation by amending the current taxi license ordinances.
Motion to refer the Committee on Ordinances, Justice Jason.
Motion to refer the Committee on Ordinances has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. On the motion, Counselor Vice President.
Yeah, the only thing that I wanna add to this is, we have had discussions previously with taxi cabs, and I believe Town Taxi got a van that was handicap accessible, but the cost of the insurance and how often people called to use it wasn't feasible. But one of the problems is that now taxi cabs are also not running at night, and there is something in the Regulations Committee that's been there since May about Ubers and Lifts and them having to pay more. So I think if you kind of put them all together, so that it's a wider discussion. I know that Freddie Um had talked to Council Pelletier about it as well, that there was a problem, but if the city, you know, paid the insurance, I think that it could be workable. Because then they were on demand or something. But I think both of them should be brought together, so maybe if Regulations has a meeting, they can send that piece to ordinance to discuss the, you know, the medallions and all that, that Uber doesn't have to have, so it would help without taxi cabs. Just throwing it out there. It can go here, but I just want people to know there's something in Regulations.
Do you...
With that, I yield.
The Counselor C. Seven, Counselor Reposo?
Yeah, so...
You know, I can't understand Freddie needing medallions. You call me...
I call Counselor C. Seven, Reposo. He had his hand up first.
Oh, all right, there's no problem.
I'll defer to Counsel Pelletier.
No, 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 go ahead.
Go ahead, Joe.
Gentleman first.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
Counselor C. Five, Counselor Pelletier.
Yeah, I just don't understand. The cab companies, they work hard. They gotta get medallions and pay everything, and you got Ubers running around. Don't need anything. They can pick them up anywhere at this one here. And then they got other people, independent. How do we protect the guy? We should be protecting our people that are picking up our people in the city for a while. Then you got these Ubers running around, making all kinds of money and not paying their fair shares. I think it's a lousy deal and there should be something done. They wanted to buy some medallions. He can't sell the company because they got nothing to sell. That's the problem. And, you know, if you're giving them medallions, you bought them medallions, you got something to sell, so that's the way I feel about it. He's got shortchanged. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor C. Seven, Counselor Reposo.
Yeah, thank you. So the idea really behind this resolution is to not necessarily, I think, you know, we did some research in the history of this conversation, and I'm not exactly in the same vein as prior resolutions in my years past that I wasn't here for. But really, just to bring the people to the table to see that, how can we expand the accessibility to those in the ADA community? Less about sticking it to the cab companies, and while I recognize the Ubers and Lifts of the world, which are very much unregulated to this point, how can we, again, we're looking at helping our people more than anything else. So how can we expand accessibility to our people that need that transportation? We know that Serta offers a service. It's not 24 hours. I know taxi companies don't offer it. It's 24 hours. Not looking for any of that. I'm looking to, how can we broaden the reach for our people to get more people where they need to go? And, you know, those with disabilities, it's a harder stretch to get there. So we wanna make sure that we can help all those who need transportation. That's kind of the idea of bringing everybody together. I yield. Thank you.
That's fine, Counselor. I mean, as Counselor Perry pointed out, those meetings have been had in the past, and for one obstacle or another, it just wasn't feasible for the taxi cab drive people to do it at that time, but maybe things have changed, and maybe there's other solutions.
And that's what we're looking at.
Let's have the meeting. I agree. Motion has been made and seconded. Counselor C. Six, Five, Counselor Pelletier, you have something in my sight?
Yes, my wife seems to be yawning, and she's getting tired. I'd like to be excused.
You need to take care of her.
As Elvis says, Elvis left the building, Leo was leaving the building. Is that permissible with you?
Yes, it is, Counselor.
Mr. President?
You can do whatever you like, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
God bless you all.
God bless you, and God bless your wife.
Oh!
Is that yours, the fan?
No, that's a...
Don't forget the key to the city. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Item seven is an order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid for one new pole on Penn Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have the police chief's report on licenses?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt chief's report on licenses has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine are applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses for Nicholas Fagioli on 633 Lawton Street, Ronald Pedro at 753 Pleasant Street, and Dylan Jarabek at 232 Lapham Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten are a number of auto repair shop license application, renewal applications for Nicholas Fagioli at 633 Lawton, Fuad Reshmani at 260 Linden Street, John Maderas at 9698 Alden Street, Eli Borania at 3293 North Main Street, Ronald Picard, 35 Oak Grove Avenue, Francis May, 156 Pleasant Street, Vincent Nanny, 1426 Plymouth Avenue, Dylan Jarabek, 232 Lapham Street, Jacinto Silva, 70 William Street, Rodrigo Takash, 192 C 18th Street, and Eleo Yunes, 1082 North Main Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven is a request for a light order on lighting survey on Emery Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt the light survey? Has it been made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have a number of claims?
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirteen is a communication from the Mass Department of Public Safety and Licensing regarding the issuance of a license to Chris Jacobs Stay Ready Boxing for a boxing event at PAL on December 16th.
Second.
Motion accepted. Place that file has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fourteen is a request for a structure on a public way. This is for a business to place two ten-foot tables against their business, I guess, five days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On the sidewalk?
On the sidewalk, against their building where they operate their business, five days a week, eight to eight.
Motion has been made and seconded. On the motion, Counselor C. Two, Counselor Dionne.
How did...
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna be Leo now. Apologize.
Yeah, my question would be, how wide are these tables? And are people gonna be able to get by on the sidewalk? In a, if somebody has a wheelchair or some motorized vehicle? How much, what's the width of the tables versus...
They don't have a width. It just ten, it says ten-foot tables.
Yeah, but that would be my question. Are they gonna take up too much of the sidewalk? That people are gonna have to go into the street and then back up on the sidewalk? With that, I yield.
Counselor C. One, Counselor Cadine?
She asked the same questions.
So motion...
I would refer to motion regulations.
Yeah.
I would make that motion.
Motion to refer to committee regulations has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Items, item fifteen is an open meeting law complaint filed at the last meeting alleging a violation on November 28th.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council?
Second.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And item sixteen is another open meeting law complaint.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have an application for Perry Heavy Equipment Services for Drain层's license.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And item seventeen is another drainlay application for Solomini Excavation and Utility.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take eighteen to twenty-three together?
Second.
Motion to take items eighteen through twenty-three, City Council meetings, has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is there a motion to approve, eighteen through twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor? Madam Clerk, do you want to just read them?
Sure.
The dates, please.
Sure. We have meetings of, public hearings, Committee on Finance, and the regular meeting for November 14th, and public hearing, Committee on Finance, and regular meeting on November 28th.
Motion to adopt has been made, approved, has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, we have the Committee on Finance at a meeting held on December 12th, voted unanimously to recommend that the attached loan order be referred to the full council for action with Council Pelletier absent and not voting. This is the $8,101,636 loan order for the Robert Maderas Resiliency Prep Academy.
Motion to obey.
Motion to adopt the loan order?
Nda.
Has been made and seconded. Your roll call? Unneeded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council meeting is now adjourned.